Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Town and Planet Board meeting from Monday, December 18th, 2023. Edna is not with us this evening. She's not feeling well, but we have a call. You have before you the posted meeting agenda. And let me announce that this evening we will be adding another item to the agenda for this evening, and that is a request for a grass near timeline extension. I don't know of anything else that's changing regarding the agenda. You have Jim's meeting notes before you. Any questions or comments about those? May I have a motion? Second. Motion by Sean. Second, please.
Second.
Second, Sharon, almost in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Now, you have the draft December 4th minutes. Any comments, corrections, additions? During the noon, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second.
Second, Elise, almost in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Anyone with any correspondence or announcements?
I do have one announcement just for the board. I think Gretchen had a birthday yesterday.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Gretchen.
Happy birthday, Gretchen.
And I think we all, as we end the year, want to thank you for the great work you've done for the Planning Board. I don't think we've ever had a comment on the minutes. I don't think we've ever had a correction. So it is a pleasure to work with you, and we wish you all the best on your next birthday, the year from now. I'd also like to take the opportunity to, I know some of you know that this is Mr. Turnbull, my dear friend, Michael Turnbull's last meeting on the Planning Board. Earlier this evening, we had a little bit of a Planning Board and Town Volunteer recognition. I won't call it a celebration because I don't consider it to be celebratory. It's bittersweet for me. Michael and I have served together, I figure, for close to 20 years as members of the Planning Board. It goes without saying that he cares passionately about the town of Rymbeck, that he works diligently either as a Planning Board member, or as an interim zoning administrator, or as whatever you ask him to do, he has always been there. I think he sleeps with his zoning law under his pillow because he can cite chapter and verse in a way that I find overwhelmingly impossible to emulate. He will be sorely, sorely missed. I would invite all of you, there is celebratory cake in the back, so please, as the meeting continues, help yourself to some cake so that you can, to wish Michael Godspeed in his adventures in the future. Jim had put together a very brief, sort of worthless PowerPoint overview of some of the memorable moments of Michael's time on the Town and Planet Board. And I'll just let it speak for itself. I hope for Michael to bring me back fond memories.
Sorry, Michael.
This is kind of an inside joke. Michael was always the black box with the name. So that's the COVID period. I can't even begin to calculate the hours. I believe Michael has participated in hundreds of meetings, from pre-conference meetings to site visits, to every imaginable kind of meeting. I know it's in the hundreds, maybe even the thousands. The hours are countless. And I would like just a round of applause to thank him for his.
I could have 30 seconds for the ball. For me, it's been a pleasure. The people you see up there, they do so much of themselves, and they work together well to support one another. The staff we have downstairs, Gretchen is invaluable. I could not have done what I was doing at this fair without her help, keeping me from making really dumb mistakes. It's a pleasure to work for this town. The people in this town are great. We have a wonderful community. I leave the Planning Board knowing it's in very good hands. The town's really lucky to have them, and we continue to do what they've done so well for so long, to preserve our community and what it felt we wanted to be. And I hope that, I hope you all will be able to work with them. I know we have a lot of challenges ahead. I know this board is up to it. It's great to have the public come and participate because that's the only way government knows what's really going on, what people really want. You really need to automate yourself, come on in and participate. But I want to thank everyone who supported me, made it possible for me to do this, especially the people sitting up here right now. If anyone deserves a hand, it's them because dealing with me is not always the most pleasant thing in the world to do. And for tonight, I want to thank everyone. It's been a lot of fun, and thank you.
Let us proceed now with new applications. We only have one to look at this evening, that's 12468 Corp. McMathal, 473, 475 Mill Road, Site Plan Amendment, Permit for Existing Platforms. Yes?
Good evening. My name's Sean Kemp. I'm an attorney that represents 12468, Nick McMathal. He just called me 45 minutes ago and said that he wasn't going to be able to attend tonight. I haven't had the benefit of seeing the application, but I'm here on another matter, so I wanted to see if we could keep the ball moving forward. If I need to supplement the application with the attorney authorization, I can do so by the end of the week, if that's permitted by the board. It's my understanding that the weather washed out the tracks or something like that coming out of the city, so a lot of trainings have been delayed and/or canceled. I understand that the board has its own protocol, so I'm not trying to go around that, but if we can keep the ball moving forward, that'd be great. I do know a little bit about this, actually. I believe Michael was the person that discovered this issue, and we've had some conversations about it. But again, I didn't put together the application materials or anything like that, so I'm a little bit out of this advantage, but I think it's kind of straightforward, so we might be able to get some work done tonight, assuming the application's complete.
Jim, do you want to do a brief summary of this, just to refresh everybody's memory?
Again, as long as we're comfortable moving forward, that we don't have that attorney representation certificate, but if it could be signed and you don't have an issue with it, then I'm fine.
Do we need that for you to just refresh our memory on the project?
Yeah. I can refresh the project, certainly. So this is Mr. McMathal's property. It is down on.
Mill Road.
Mill Road, I think, corner of Mill and Morton. The house is up here. We did review projects here.
Two years ago?
My time is off.
Three years.
Basketball court. Yep, basketball courts and some changes to the house itself. This was the site plan from then. Since then, it was found that there are these existing wooden platforms down at the very lower end of the property. He did provide pictures. They are existing. They were existing, I guess, by the previous owner, the right down by the creek. Mr. McMathal, in our pre-conference discussions, did agree that these are within not only the buffer but the wetlands, so we'd not require a delineation. It was given that they're within that wetland area, so moving forward with it as if it is in the wetland. These are the platforms that exist as they stand now. So this will be a site plan and a wetland permit request. They're going to waive the delineation, but we all agree that it's within the wetland area. You need to submit a site plan for this, and we did discuss the fact that the platforms, if you were going to take them out, might cause more damage to what's there than to just leave them and let them fall apart, and that if they did fall apart, we would expect that there would be a condition in the resolutions, we should have another night, that you would not be able to legal those platforms as they stand. And I think that kind of sums up the discussion so far. I really don't have any issues other than what I already kind of mentioned.
I'm probably feeling a little bit about, it's working, about what happened. The presence of these platforms was brought to my attention by a neighbor, and so I went out to take a look and whatnot, and saw yes and no, they were there. They were not going to be vendors from McMathal, they'd been put in by the PD or someone. They'd been there for quite a while. As you look at it on the slope going down to the river, it was my feeling, and so this is my feeling, that to remove them would do more harm than good. Everything is stable around them, everything is rolling around them, and to remove them, because obviously there's nothing going underneath them, and you'd be disturbing the soil as well, you would then run the risk of washout things of that sort. I think the idea of leaving them there, leaving them there, but then allowing nature to slowly do its thing is probably the smallest thing to do also, just given where they are on the slope from up here. But that's where this originated, and he's just trying to make legal what some, maybe some did on the property.
That's correct.
So are we able to accept this without Mr. McMathal being here to represent himself? Sean?
Yeah. I think that, given that the problem tonight was the applicant's inability to attend because of the weather conditions, and Mr. Kemp's introduced the application tonight, but he's not really making substantive statements to the board. I think the board is, if the board thinks that the application is incomplete, I think you can take the application, declare it to be complete, and then, Mr. Kemp, if you file the attorney's authorization before the next meeting, that would be appreciated.
Sure, that's not a problem.
The deadline, what's the submission deadline, two weeks before the meeting?
Yeah, that's not even sure.
That's my recommendation.
Planning Board members, any questions of either Michael or Jim, perhaps could answer them?
After last night's rain, did anybody go to check to see if they're still there?
They're probably still there. They're up a little bit higher.
They might be floating, Doc. Yeah.
But as Michael pointed out, they weren't installed by the current owner, they were pre-existing, and it's really just a matter of trying to bring this into compliance and minimize any more risk to that area, because probably much more disturbance pulling them out than just like you're.
I'm satisfied that we have all the information we need to accept this. And Jim, you have a draft procedural resolution?
I do. Draft procedural resolution for 12468 Corp. McMathal for Site Plan Amendment and Wetlands Permit under Town Code Chapter 125, to permit existing wooden platforms of 473 Mill Road within the RA-10 zoning district, accepting the application supporting documents as adequate, appreciating your view by the Planning Board, clarifying the action as type 2 under C curve, which, I want to applaud your review, is not required, scheduling the public hearing for January.
16.
January 16th. We will send this to the CAB for review, the WAC, and Deutches County for the site plan, and we need two Planning Board members to be seated.
Sharon, do you want to go with Sharon? All right, we have a draft procedural resolution, and have a motion to accept it.
So moved.
Thanks, Greg. Second. Thank you, Julius, almost in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension?
Thank you very much.
We just convey to Nick that you'll arrange for a second.
Certainly will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up this evening, since we are at 6:16, we can move into the public hearing. A portion of this evening's meeting will be gave in front of Forest Mountain, Hudson Road, Site Plan and Wetlands Permit to Construct Garrets. Your reminder, this was presented to us a month ago, I guess, and unfortunately, it was not properly noticed, and so we are going to have to reschedule the meeting until January 16th, meaning when the public notification will go for the public hearing. So any questions for anyone? Anything else Gretchen can add to this?
Just need a motion.
Just need a motion to reschedule the public hearing, continue the public hearing until January 16th. So moved. Thank you, Julius. Second. Second, Sean, almost in favor? Aye. Opposed. The next public hearing scheduled for this evening is Rockledge, 402 Accret Coast Road, Site Plan, special use permit, and Wetlands Permit for Planning Board Members. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Seth Stibbe with Mark Kermitzky, PE LSPC, here this evening to represent Hudson Valley and Rhinebeck LLC, and their application for a site plan, a special permit, a subdivision, and a town wetlands permit. We have developed the plans, and the plans have been reviewed by the town engineer, Tom Consol. I'm here this evening with Sean Kemp, also representing the client. Unfortunately, Mark is not able to make it to tonight's meeting. It is a public hearing, so I'm not sure what you'd like us to do as far as presenting information to whether the public or the board, but all of the plans and the engineering documents have been deemed to complete. That includes traffic analysis, EAF elements, which we discussed further tonight, the stormwater, pollution prevention plan, which has also been done. All of the plan sheets themselves have been updated and correspond with all of those documents. Also, the sanitary disposal system, which is under review by the state and the county, has been submitted, as well as the water supply system. So that is the status of the application at the moment. I don't know if you want to go to public comment, and I know there will be some discussion about part three analysis at this point.
Ask Jim?
John, we were going to just kind of discuss next steps.
John Lyons, counsel to the Planning Board. So before you open the public hearing tonight, I wanted to speak very broadly about my recommendations with regard to next steps on this application. As you know, this application goes back quite a while. The application was made, I think, before, it was submitted before the pandemic. There have been many changes to the project as it's evolved over time as a result of public comment, and some of the time that has passed has had to do with reformulations of the plans to accommodate changes in the project design. And there's been a hiatus recently, while the applicant gathered some final information for submission to the board. In the interim, as far as I understand it, there's some new folks have moved into the neighborhood that are near this project, and we also have some new Town Board members on the board that were not on the board at the time the review of this project began. And so the submission of this material from the applicant, I think, provides an opportunity for the board to continue its review, but I think also give you a little bit of a reset so that we, both the board and members of the public and the applicant, can be poised to move forward with the information that they need to do so. So my suggestion to the board is that, I'm sorry to suggest a special meeting, but I'm going to suggest a special meeting be held by the board on a night that you don't have anything else on your agenda. Perhaps on that night, Seth or Mark, and perhaps someone from the applicant can come in, and I think it would be a good idea on that night to be able to make a presentation about the history of the project, just to explain how it started out, where it's gone in the interim, just so the board members and the public can understand how we got, you know, what's transpired from the applicant's perspective from the beginning of the project to where we are today. And at that same meeting, I've had some conversations with Jim Levy, who is your planning consultant, and on that, at that meeting also, Jim will provide a little presentation with regard to the Planning Board's perspective, what's gone on with the review, what issues that the Planning Board has been looking at with regard to both the board's secret environmental review, and also the review that we're conducting with respect to the Rhinebeck zoning law. And hopefully, Jim's project and the applicant's presentation will dovetail in providing a good big picture with regard to how we got where we are from the perspective of both the applicant and the board, and I'm hoping that that will, that information will provide, be helpful to members of the public. I don't envision the board taking any action on that night. It's really just a night for the dissemination of information, both to new board members and the public. And the final item that I think we can talk about on that night is, to the extent possible, plotting the path forward, and at least discuss what the immediate next steps in the review are. You have your secret review in front of you. You've not issued a determination of significance yet on this project pursuant to secret, and then you have your reviews pursuant to the zoning law for subdivisions, site plan, and wetlands. So that's my suggestion, and that way, we can, and then we can have a public hearing session after that's been done, and sort of the public's up to date. Oh, the other thing I think we can do that night, or maybe we can do that tonight, is I understand that there have been requests about the information and the documents about this project, and maybe Gretchen, before we close this item on the agenda, maybe you can just explain how members of the public can access the document repository for this project so they can find it. My understanding is that most of the information is already available in terms of what's been submitted, is available to the public through the online database for this, and so perhaps we can talk about that tonight. And then, as I said, after the, after the, at the special meeting, maybe the one piece of official business that we can do is establish another session of the public hearing to take place, continuing from tonight, and then give the public an opportunity to comment with the benefit of having the information that's been disseminated by this sort of reset in the process. So that's what my recommendation is.
Members of the Planning Board, you have questions for John?
I welcome the opportunity to have an update, and I'm not really that new to the board, but this application does predate my tenure, and I did go to one of the site meetings, and I have tried to keep up with everything that's gone on, but it would be nice to have a fuller picture of the progress that's been made, and also, you know, where we are and where we need to go.
Well, I'm the board's, I've been the board's counsel for the whole time this has been in front of the board, but I'm in my 60s now, and I haven't seen this for a little while, and I too would like to hear a refresher update and to sort of reconnect with the history of this.
Yeah, and even though a lot of progress has been made and there have been changes, there's nothing that would encroach on a threshold value or change the, you know, the nature of the project, or anything that was analyzed early on that's been so.
Well, I think that one of the things we want to talk about are, you know, just some decisions were made about the project as it's gone along, and I think we can talk about that. You know, most notable is the switch of the project from having a country in component to being a completely residential proposal. Like, you know, the applicants looked at a lot of issues on the, you know, environmental impact issues on the project in response to concerns that have been raised by the board and the public as we've gone along, so it would be good to get a little bit of a discussion about what those, you know, what the applicant's analysis is involved, and Jim can talk a little bit about how the Planning Board has evaluated those challenges as well.
Thank you. This one with the ZVA?
Say, the ZVA? Well, there is a variance required. I haven't had conversations. The variance application was made to the zoning board of appeals, and then it was, at the request of the applicant, it was put on hold, and I believe that that's the status of the variance application at the moment. And of course, and we can talk to Seth about, or Sean about what the, how the applicant envisions the timetable for resuming that variance application, but, and then I'd also note that the zoning board of appeals cannot issue a determination, you know, they can't issue any kind of final decision because of secret unless a negative declaration's been issued or a direct environmental impact statement has been accepted as complete.
So the steps are, just to summarize essentially, it's Planning Board review for secret, then it will go to ZVA, then back to the Planning Board?
Well, that's theoretically, yes. It has to happen that way in the sense that ZVA doesn't necessarily have to issue the variance in the sequence that you mentioned. There have been instances where we've issued a conditional approval and asked the applicant to go out and get their variance, but it's also been done this way, where it's been done in parallel. And typically, although there's a 62-day deadline for zoning boards of appeals to issue determinations after the close of a public hearing for the ZVA, typically in these situations, the applicant grants the ZVA an extension that allows that to be extended beyond the 62 days until the point that it can be meshed with the rest of the process.
May I assume that you are all in favor of this special meeting? Well, don't drown out.
You seem to be now pouring an enthusiastic person.
I think Michael should have a way to think about this.
Michael gets two votes.
Yes, you both.
All right.
I know you guys are meeting twice a month, and I'm sorry to make this suggestion, but by the same token, with the volume of business that you have on the docket for your regular meetings, and given the history of this and the importance of this project to both the applicant and the community, I think just one night of unkind of undivided focus on this, I think, would be something that would be good going forward, even though it's no fun to leave home and commit.
Would you have a sense of the length of that meeting? The reason I'm asking is because another option, and I don't know that it's preferred option, would be to have a meeting prior to a Planning Board meeting on an already scheduled.
Yeah, you could do that. I mean, I might, without, you know, shooting strictly from the hip on this, I think you need to set aside 90 minutes for, in order to have sufficient time for presentations and maybe a little bit of dialogue.
So that probably argues in favor of a set aside meeting of its own.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't come in or start the meeting earlier. It's a, you know, it's a long night if you're going to do your regular business, depending on what else is on your agenda.
Could we just close the agenda off for one of the.
I would be in favor of taking a soon, in the near future, meeting and.
Just close the agenda?
Just close the agenda on that and make this unique to that topic, because I do think it's an important enough application that it ruins our undivided attention. So perhaps, do we, you don't need to set a date tonight, I presume, for this meeting?
No, but, you know, we recommend that it be done.
I would then ask Gretchen if she would look ahead at the next two meetings within, let's say, the next six weeks, to identify a night that we can do that. She's going to have to juggle what's already been scheduled against what's coming, so.
I think one other thing too that maybe you can do, Gretchen, is to check with Andy Murn or Christian Moore from CPL, the board's consulting engineers, and it would probably be good to have either Andy or Christian at that meeting also, so they can speak to the technical work that's been done in connection with the review.
Excellent. Excellent. Are you okay with that? Do we need a motion to schedule this for question meeting? I agree so.
You just can even continue it, right?
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna.
Well, set a, set a special meeting date. You have to open your public hearing for this evening. And if there's testimony, listen to the testimony that's being given and then you can continue the public hearing over to either a date certain or if you're going to figure out what the next date is at the special meeting, I think we're going to have to renotice if we do that, if we don't set it, continue it over to a date certain tonight.
What if we continue it tonight and if that changed, put it on the next agenda to make a motion to continue it to the date that we choose?
You can do that, as long as we.
So it's announced?
If we can post something on the website so that the public one knows in advance of the meeting so people aren't turning out and then just having the public hearing session adjourned.
Anything else to plan for the numbers? Seth, do I, do you, Sean, have any additional comments you wish to make before I open the public comment?
I think the only comment I have is, to the extent that we could, I think it's a great idea to get everybody on the same page because there have been a lot of developments on the project over time. But the, the best that we could do to keep this on a shorter leash would be greatly appreciated. I know that it's a busy time of year and you guys are, have your own schedules that you need to contend with, but if we could keep it on the earlier side of that six weeks as opposed to later, it'd be greatly appreciated to help move, move things along, get some momentum, carry this across, finish on.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll be the same way. But I think Gretchen can have ample time to look at what's before us and what she can and can't work around.
Understood.
So we take that into consideration.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would open it up for public comment if you have comments.
Just before you do that, Melody, if we could, Gretchen, if you could just say a word or two about how members of the public can access the document repository for this?
Jim actually was.
Did you just pull it up?
We thought we'd do a little show and tell.
Okay.
And not just leave Gretchen hanging.
And they can also make an appointment to come in and check this too.
Okay. Just as long as everyone understands the public can access you.
So if you go to the Rhinebeck, Town Rhinebeck homepage and you go to town government and boards, and the planning board, at the top of the page, at the top of the page is this, it's a link to applications before the planning boards. This is all the active applications before the board on a Google Drive. And if you click on the folder, it brings up all the current projects that are in front of the planning board in Rockledge, happens to be the first ones to hear. And then all the files that have been submitted are available here online.
Download them. Look at them.
Download them.
And just to repeat, if people did not hear, if you want to make an appointment to come in and review the files in actuality as opposed to online, just give Gretchen a call and contact her by email and she can set an appointment for you. Okay? We're going to take public comment?
This was specific to that.
Well, all right, you want to come up and ask your question?
Sorry, this is really a question. This is, I think, I think most of us know how to access the files, at least the Rockledge group know how to access these files. I think some of the questions we have sometimes are about, you know, we really don't know what the planning board's concerns have been, like the, other than the end here, the back and forth. So sometimes we see in things references to something that sounds like there should be a document about stuff. And so it's those documents and then anything that you have requested to address any concerns you've had along the way that would be for you, but wouldn't have been from the applicants, et cetera. So I think that's where we're, sometimes we ask for things, sometimes we ask for things because we're confused because there are so many things. But, but I think that we kind of feel like there's documentation out there, particularly between the planning board and whoever you're relying on other than the applicant for insights that we'd love to see if we could. So I just wanted to clarify that, but thank you very much for reminding everybody where that place is.
All right, unless there's anything else, I will open it now for the public comment.
My name's Hans Boel. I live at 258 Ackerman Hook Road, which is just south of Kipsburging and just north of Fly, the Y off that. So there's a little bridge that says Fallsburg, goes under and travels through our land. Not for the first time, but it's, what you're saying, just happened in the last 24 hours, that bridge breached the road and still was when we drove in today for this meeting. So it's been about, oh, eight or nine hours now. It's been flooding my field, washed out about 30 feet of a three-foot deep, about three-foot wide trench that I had built this summer to drain my field when it fills, partly fills because Kipsburg is drained through a culvert into my field, but then also the Fallsburg. Anytime it reaches that bridge, which has been several times now, really does terrific That is very concerning when I think about the treatment plant that is proposed and that that then treated water is going to be what's breaching that bridge as we're getting more and more of these heavy storms. And that that water is then going to be sitting in my field and doing whatever it does, chlorine, I'm not sure what, but I'm sure I don't want any of it there. The last time I spoke, I hoped that there would be consideration by the contractor, this, you know, Rockledge applicant, to do something other than that water treatment and disgorging it once it's treated into the Fallsburg, like treat it so it can be used as gray water for their own purposes upon the property or treat it in such a way that they can drink it themselves. That's possible. You know, everybody else has to create a leach field, you know, their own septic. This is going to be a 36, I guess, if they get the variance, which I don't think they should, but that's, that's a lot of wastewater coming into the Fallsburg and is already kind of at capacity. Much of the time, it's a, it's a pretty full stream as it is and that's getting more so with, for the climate change. So we have that big concern and we continue to have many concerns about the additional traffic on this small windy road. So not to beat a dead horse, but I want to continue putting this stuff in front of the board because these are very, very big concerns of.
Box for you.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry to hear about your bridge.
I have a character on 467 Ackerman Hook Road. This is apropos of what Hans was saying. So, so it is Fallsburg Creek that's breached the bridge that he's talking about. I believe it's also come over the road by langtoes on Fly today. And, but in addition to that, the, because it is, the waste treatment plant is surrounded by wetlands and is in overlapping wetland, property zones, there's quite a lot of water that came over the road today from the land around the waste treatment plant that comes into, into our yard. So I'm more, personally more worried about stuff coming out of the waste treatment plant pretreated in a flood, in a flood situation. So that was something that was, that we witnessed today as well. And, you know, it's, it's in apropos of climate change. The, the stream that the waste treatment plant empties into is actually not directly Fallsburg Creek, it's a tributary and it is historically an intermittent stream. So we run these two extremes of there being nothing in it in the, normally in the summer and most of the year to, in the last two years, to being, running somewhat most of the time and then in extreme weather conditions, being a roaring torrent that goes through our backyard. So, so just to give you a full idea of the impact of weather like this on the treatment plant and surrounding waters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trish Kirklois and I live at 278 Ackerman Hook Road. So I guess we're reiterating our concerns tonight. So I will also say, excuse me, the septic outflow is really very concerning and we've lived in our home long enough to know that when Daytop was at that, on that property, there were terrible smells all around our neighborhood. One of our neighbors said, is your, is your septic tank leaking? Because I can smell septic. And it turns out it was coming from Daytop. So from what I've heard, there's been no remediation to that perfectly fine working septic plant and I fear that we're going to have the same situation that we had before. It's, we don't have that situation now because there's nothing up there, but I think the minute there's a bunch of condos up there, we're going to have a constant smell of septic. And where do we go to get that fixed? There's no place to go to get that fixed. Where to help them do it? The DEC has a million of these little water treatment plants all over the place and they don't really test them on a regular basis. So it's just going to be tough luck for us and our health and our property values. So there's that. That's a big concern. And thinking, trying to think of a compromise, if the project goes through, instead of jetting all that waste into the, what will eventually go to the Fallsburg, why not put it out in the opposite direction and put it right into the swamp, maybe on the other side of the property? So, you know, perhaps there's some compromise, although I think the best thing would be to have a septic system just like everybody else has to have, with a leach field and all the rest. And of course, the second thing is the traffic. I'm worried about people on the road. There are seven children that live on the, very, very close by where we live, young children, and people tend to go fast on that road. And so to add that much more traffic, not to mention the construction vehicles during the whole construction phase, we put these children at risk more than they already are. And also the character of the road itself, which is, nobody seems to think about the road as being historical, but Ackerman Hook Road is an historic road. There are a lot of old houses on it. You can get from Route 9 in Rhinebeck to Route 9, 9G in Hyde Park. And it's a beautiful old country road. And that, that will go away with a lot more traffic. And then another point is public access. If we're, you know, when we come to compromise, if the road is being used and there's no more place to walk on the road because it's so heavily trafficked, and then you have this property that's being developed and is historically preserved and everything else, well, that's great if you, if you have a million dollar condo in there, but if you're some schlup that just likes to take a walk on a quiet road, then you're out of luck and you can't even go up into that property and, and use it for purposes of walking or biking or hiking or whatever. So I think a good compromise would be to allow public access to that property if the project goes through, which I think, I think that we should all stick to five acre zoning out there. And again, the historic preservation hook on this, to me, doesn't make sense. If you're going to preserve a historic property, I think it should be preserved as it is, not chopped up into condominiums just to get a break on the density requirements. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Trish.
I live at 220 Fly Road and we're right along the Fallsburg and it did flood over our road. A lot of it went into our basement. Our house is, part of it is built in the 1700s, so we have our own historic preservation going on. We like to first do no harm. I reviewed what I could find online of the engineering documents and tried to do my best to understand the operation of the wastewater treatment plant. And as far as I can tell, the wastewater treatment plant is circa 1980s at best technology. It's not state of the art. It will take the solids out of the waste stream and save those for later and it will stop E. coli with additives, but it's not going to take any chemicals up. So anything that somebody puts in their waste stream other than what goes down the toilet is going to wind up in the Fallsburg. The Fallsburg flows all the way, winds around through wetlands and winds up just near Southlands and eventually gets into the Hudson River. So it's an important component of our, our watershed and I don't think we should minimize that importance and allow chemicals to wind up in there. We do our best never to put anything bad in our septic system. You know, we'll try not to let it come into the house and we certainly try not to let it go back into the watershed. So in reviewing the engineering documents, I, I have a broken record about the water quality of the Fallsburg Creek and I didn't see any questioning of the waste treatment plant in the engineering documents. I'd like to know exactly what that wastewater treatment plant is going to filter out and what it's going to allow into the watershed. And I'd like that documented in some kind of report from the town engineers. I'd also like to know what's going to happen when it stops operating, when there's pretreatment overflow into our neighborhood. What happens on that property? Do they shut off the water to all the condominiums so that the wastewater doesn't flow into our yards? I don't think that's part of their plan. So I, I appreciate the suggestion that we have another meeting and I'd like the engineers to review exactly what it is they've questioned and present it to us, other than in just the online format. I'd also like to know what the status of the DEC permit is, what, where it is and what kind of questions the developer's being asked. So that's, that's it.
Thank you.
I'm here in comment on 540 Ackerman Hook Road in Rhinebeck. So the wastewater issues can be resolved very easily. As of right, the developer can build 12 houses with septic systems, each for each individual house, as of right, move and be done. You could then demolish the septic system or that treatment plant and proceed, right? But he needs to get, or he says he needs to get 30 something just so he can make more profit, right? There isn't a housing shortage for those kind of units in Langton, right? Units that was out for seven or eight or nine hundred houses, a lot of each. I don't think we need more of them. However, why should we give them permission to build that many extra units? However, why should we give them permission to build that many extra units and compromise our water, our roads, our peace of mind, everything? I don't understand why that would be allowed. It doesn't make any sense. He's one guy. He he took a chance and he bought it or got it or whatever, however he did it. And I'd like the board, there's a lot of opposition. There's been going on for seven or eight years. There's a lot of names, a lot of letters. I think the board should read them all, review everything, and get a good clear, there's a lot of new faces that I haven't seen before. So the board needs to get a good idea of what's going on here. It's it's one man who bought this place and now wants to put, pretty much ruin our road. It's a little narrow, windy road with tree stumps coming right out. When you drive there, you gotta be careful. Sometimes you can't pass easily. And there is, you know, it's going to be 30 something units, maybe 100 extra cars on that road, which is a lot. Has everybody driven on the road and seen it? Yeah? So it's 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 narrow and windy and it's it was never intended for this kind of development, that road. And can't be made wider and it's not going to be any wider. So it's a problem. And that historic house, when he subdivides off the bill of a land, that land is no longer historic. So why would you get special treatment for that land if you've taken it away from the mansion? It's now a separate piece of land with five acres on it. So that would that would not be 30 something units. So the board, it seems to me a very simple issue here. He's asking for something, can't get it up. And I feel pretty confident that, I don't know why it's going on so long. I guess he just keeps asking for big things and he takes on a little bit and then expects that to be allowed. It's still way out of line. 12 houses, 12 septic systems, get rid of that thing and we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to add on to Patricia Kurthoyes's comment on the wetland idea. And I am 100% behind Karen's notion that it shouldn't be any bigger than the original, you know, 13, 12 or 13. That said, you know, even if those 12 or 13 are put in and they're thinking about using the wastewater treatment plant, putting that back into their own wetland rather than having it travel through everybody else's property, Fallsburg, to get to the swamp that's behind my house, that's where it's going anyway. Then it comes out of that swamp and goes further down to the Hudson. Why have it meander through everybody's property when they can just dump it back in their own and have it, you know, work its way back from there?
I think one of the documents that we saw mentioned very early on in the process was an impact report on the receiving waters. And that's something we haven't seen in files. So when we have this meeting, it would be great if if they could speak to that. And I think that addresses some of the concerns that have been raised today.
I put up something one second. One more case. You know, we were talking about the get rid of the wastewater, but a lot of people on that road have, I've got two wells on my house. They were drilled, that house was built in 1830. The wells are like 40 or 50 feet deep. They haven't gone dry so far, but the aquifer, like now it's full with very wet weather, but the weather's been going very crazy. So we could get three months with no water, where everybody's wells will go dry or the older ones will go dry. You know what I mean? Especially if we tap into aquifer and we pull out water for 30 condos. So it's not just a matter of getting rid of the wastewater. It'll be a problem with well water. We'll have to drill deeper wells and it costs everybody and there may not be water for everybody down the road. You know what I mean? So it's it's not just a matter of filling everything up at houses. There's water right now, but next year, the wetlands going in a year or two, there might not be water for everybody. So that's a factor that's got to be taken into account too. There's no real provisions for aquifer water or the amount that's being used. There's not a lot of concern with that these days, but maybe there will be more down the road. It would be a problem in the future. Thank you.
I just would like to request of the developer that if there is a public, an opportunity for public input in the DEC review, that somehow the public be made aware of it. I have tried to find out that, you know, how that process works and and it's a bit confusing. And it might be easy to miss a public, an opportunity for public input to the DEC. I think it's called the Speedies, Speedies permitting process. So I'd like to officially request that we be notified so that we have an opportunity to request input there. If anybody has any ideas on how to know when that happens, I'm kind of in the dark.
Anybody else? Planning board members, questions? I think John would now be ready to have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yes.
Question is to when? Obviously trying to have a special meeting before I leave soon. Is that your understanding?
I mean, I can look at the schedules for the 16th of January, February 5th and February 20th. Those are the next three. I mean, I'll just put it on for the second and then make the motion to whatever date we can come there. So it'd really only be on the agenda on the second just to be able to announce the public hearing.
Does that work, John?
Yeah, it works for me as long as you just get the word out, you know, about what the what the date is. Get it posted on the website.
All right. So the motion would be to continue the public hearing.
To January 2nd.
To January 2nd.
And that's our meeting that's 7:30.
Correct.
And I'll have to. Tweet him to announce it again.
Yeah. What Gretchen is alluding to is our meeting is scheduled for January 2nd before we connected with the idea that the holiday is the reordening for the town, for the town board. So rather than bump it again, we're going to start the meeting later, I think 7:30, 7:30, as opposed to trying to pick it up on another day. So that's of the advice of her clerk for the town, who believes that their meeting will take place as expeditiously as possible. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until January 2nd?
Soon.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. My ball was a favor.
Hi.
Close extension, watching her. You guys, John, do you need to do further for tonight?
I don't think so. You know, just okay, just putting schedules together.
Okay. All right. So I encourage you all to keep a check on your inboxes so that you see what information we have to check from the schedule, the special meeting. And if you please, if any of you have any conflicts coming up, if you're planning a winter ski vacation somewhere and you want to let us know in advance, we'll try and avoid that date because I really think it's important to move many of us as possible for present at that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So if you've got conflicts coming up, just give us a heads up and we'll try and schedule around that. Or if you have days of the week that are absolutely impossible for you, please share the information with Gretchen so we're not wasting time, anybody's time, that wants to move this along and we can make it as efficient and effective as possible. So thank you for that. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your public comment. Thank you for your inti- interest. Have a wonderful holiday.
You too.
January 2nd, if not before. We have one last, it seems, to undertake this evening. That is a request from the applicants for grassmire for a timeline extension.
Good evening, I'm Chairwoman, members of the board. I'm Mr. Ward Willis with Team Mina on behalf of the applicant, Grassmire House. I'll be here before you tonight asking for an extension of the site plan approval. This board, as you may recall, granted site plan approval on June 20th, 2022. There were a number of conditions that needed to be satisfied before the site plan could be signed. We did comply with the condition regarding the subdivision and the subdivision map was filed on August 9th as MAT 10726C, approved by the students of the board and the town. On December 20th, 2022, you granted us a six month extension. At that time, you also extended the special use permit to June 20th, 2024, our request, and also the wetlands permit to August 12th, 2025. And additionally, we came back in June 23 and obtained a permit, a six month extension. That brings us to this month, December 20th, 2023. We have made a number of great strides towards satisfying the conditions. You may recall, this is a project of a lot of outside third party agencies, and I'll provide you with a brief overview of where we stand with those third party agencies. We require a permit from the New York State Department of Transportation. The applicant requires a permit from DOT to construct the entrance at the southern entrance and undertake certain improvements to Route 9 malls where he has been assigned and approved by this board after review by your consultants. The DOT had provided during the county year before, plenty were conceptual approvals for the road improvements we proposed. That is part one of the state permit. We then have to proceed to part two and then to part three on July 8th, 2022, about a couple, two weeks after the this board's approval. So DOT advised the date to continue this review of our initial submission pursuant to the part two application. That was submitted and then on September 1st, we received comments back from DOT on January 6th of 2023. Another submission made on March 13th. Comments received and then submissions further made in April. We made another submission on August 9th when DOT asked for permit clarification, we did all the review surveying work. We made our latest submission to DOT on November 7th of this year and we're waiting for a response from DOT. We do believe we have addressed all of their comments and this should be the final review. And that's all I understand from speaking with DOT reviewers at the Kipsey or reviewing this. We were also required to obtain a DEC Notice of Intent for Construction Act, hit our Speedies permit. That was obtained in November of '22 with submitting the senior intention coverage under the Speedies general permit in store where it discharges from the construction act figure. And on February 2nd, 2030, we received an email from the DDC with a new identification number for the Speedies permit. With respect to the Justice County Department of Health, you may recall we required approval for the off-site water improvements. We made this submission August 8th of 2022. And again, we had submitted to them during this process because you referred the site plan in our application materials to the county department of health providing some comments. And then once we obtained the site plan approval, it would then further review our application materials. We submitted on August 8th of '22, received comments on November 30th of '22, had to do additional surveying work and went out and made a new submission on March 2nd of 2023, received comments April 13th of 2023, resisting comments that needed to be addressed, a lot of them technical in nature regarding the water pipes. And then we fully submitted and provided updated plans for review on November 10th of this year and were awaiting comments. We also had to obtain approval from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation DEC with respect to the wastewater treatment plant. And we made the submission on October 6th of 2022. We had a pre-application meeting with DEC. DEC required that we go out and obtain further information from our contract regarding the operation of wastewater plant as well as some more surveying work. We had another pre-application meeting in January 31st of 2023 with DEC and then submitted a complete application packet on March 22nd of this year, 2023. And then during the spring and summer, DEC staff reviewed the application for completeness, had to go out and do some additional surveying work. And then on November 30th, a couple of weeks ago, DEC issued a notice of complete application and notice of that application completeness was published in the DEC Environmental News Bulletin as well as in the Kipsey Journal acquired by DEC. The common period on the DEC permit expires on January 10th, 2024. DEC in its notice to us advises that now that the application is being deemed complete, it's being deemed a major application. They don't see the need for a public hearing unless public comments are received by January 10th. That might cause a public hearing to be required. And if there's no public hearing, then they would anticipate a permit being issued within 90 days from the date of completeness, which was November 30th. So I can provide, I provided a letter detailing all of this and I've given you a brief summary of that. I think as you can see, we had been diligently pursuing our third party agencies review. I am hopeful that this is the final review we will need, this final six month one. We're anxious to get the work started, especially given the conditions in the marketplace. We're prepared to do so, but need this, we'll hopefully be final last six month extension of the site plan approval, recognizing that we have complied with the subdivision plan being filed, previously extended the wetland permit, the use permit, and we're diligently working with various state agencies to obtain their review. So we would appreciate this board's consideration of our last 46 month extension of the site. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Can you, I know that you have Phase 1 approval and you were anticipating and I think what you're taking some work under that approval. Is that correct on the manner of now?
Correct.
Can you update us on what the status of the work under Phase 1?
Certainly. The work that was completed under the Phase 1 was the removal of the asbestos and then some shoring of availability included from additional work to the roof to prevent intrusion from the elements. That's been the extent of the work at this time.
When we were on site is that you were also talking extensively about windows, as you call.
Correct.
Didn't there some echo payments approved under Phase 1 as well?
The work, those have not been pursued at this time.
So other than the asbestos abatement, nothing that was approved under Phase 1 has advanced?
That's correct, yes. Before we mobilize to the site, we need the underlying permits from the third party agencies.
I was under impression that some of the things under Phase 1 could be undertaken. Perhaps that was necessary.
No, it could be, but I think given changes in the financing market and changes in the construction toss, it was determined for mobilizing to the site at one time was more appropriate than that we need to wait for additional permits that we need so the site can, site plan can be signed.
John, would you like to make some comments as to how we're able to advance this?
Sure.
Then I'll pick up questions from the committee board.
So John Lyons, Councilor of the Planning Board. So last week, we were notified about this situation at our office and we've had some communications with Mr. Ward Willis. And Kim and I did some of our own research on this. Michael, may you remember a case called CSI versus County Rhinebeck Planning Board from a long time ago? Yep, yep. You and I were around then, Michael.
Same time.
Anyway, a number of issues were presented in that board, but also similar fact issue was presented in that case where the planning board declined to extend, declined a request to extend beyond the expiration date. There were, in that case, it's similar to this case in that there were multiple approvals that were required that were all on different timelines. And there was a request was made by the applicant to extend one of the deadlines and that was declined. There was litigation and there's a court decision that relied upon Section 12582 with Rhinebeck zoning law, which says that, talks about the planning board should be integrating its procedures. So when there's site plan, special use permit, when you're doing your reviews, you should try to integrate them into one process. And in that case, the court basically held that it didn't make any sense for the planning board to allow for this integration by allowing some approvals to stand, but then declining a request for an extension to match the other approvals that were outstanding, even though the timeline, you know, the, in other words, this extension that's being requested is the deadline, is a terminal deadline. And the zoning law doesn't provide for a lever for the planning board to extend the approval. But the court in that case said But the court in that case said that it didn't make sense to have some approvals that stayed viable that were on different schedules and to decline, to extend another to mesh those deadlines. So the fact situation that's presented here is quite similar to the fact situation that was presented in the CSI case. And there are outstanding, there are approvals here that are still out and viable and it was our recommendation to the board that on the strength of that case, that the board can extend the approval for a site plan to at least as far as one of the approval deadlines that continues to be out there. Any questions?
Questions from anyone for John or Nick? Comments from the boards?
So is there a request, Nick, to extend to a date, sorry, I'm taking notes. Sorry.
Yes, we had requested a date through six months to your meeting in June, so it'd be June twenty, June one of July. So I said June twenty-second of twenty twenty-four.
Which is the same date as the, as that creation date for which other
That would be for the special use permit.
Okay. Make sure I have that date correct. And the mo- a motion made to the board should include, you're gonna mesh the special, the site plan approval extension to the deadlines of that
So the special use permit was June twentieth of twenty-four and the wetlands permit was August twelfth of twenty-four. I have twenty-five, but I think that's the type.
That's the next question.
Does it's twenty-four?
Yes.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Jim, do you have draft? Does it incorporate what Jim just said?
I think so.
Sean is asking if there's an opportunity or it makes sense to all everything to August so that it's all following on the same date. I mean, June one will expire.
Yes, I think you can do that if you want to do that.
Go to August?
Yes, to the furthest permit, which is the wetlands permit.
The August date is twenty twenty-five.
I agree with the type. I believe it's twenty twenty. Yeah, I think it's twenty twenty. Thank you.
Just basically what you just discussed, it's about having everything kind of more on the same date.
Understood.
Like, so I, to me is I want to just put everything on that date and then we're sitting here again in
That makes total
Eight months and we're still doing the same issues and we're looking at it very differently. Correct.
That makes total sense to me.
Are you
I would
Will you accept that extra times?
Yes, I would like to then have a request to incorporate the board member suggestion of having all three permits over on the same date. So that would be special use permit for wetlands permitting in the site plane as of August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Any disagreements?
Now, one other thing that we can discuss before we put the motion up is that I think there's a desire, Nick, on the I think there's a desire on the part of the board over the next six, over the next period, period from now till the expiration, to have more timely notice about the progress that's being made. In some of the discussions that we have had at the end of last week, we were talking about asking for a monthly report that would update the board on two things. One would be updating the board on the various, you know, kind of bring an update on the oral presentation that we made tonight. And I think the other thing would be to update the board on the likelihood of a request for another permit extension. We frankly had to do a lot of scrambling at the end of last week in order to be ready for tonight, and I think the board would like to avoid that in the future. I don't know if you have anything to add to that melody, but perhaps that if that's, those conditions are amenable to Nick, that perhaps those are conditions that can be attached to the resolution to approving the extension.
I think so. Yeah, I will echo what John said and you can comment. I think it's important that we know this was a bit late in coming and that we had to struggle to catch up with. We do, as you can imagine, get a lot of questions from the general public about what's going on with this application. And so the more information we have that we can publicly share, the better it is for you and the easier it is for me.
So would it make sense for those reports to be provided in a letter that could be posted on the planning board website?
That would be lovely. Sure. Because as you can imagine, Nick, there is great public interest in this. There always has been and the longer the public sees what they consider to be, the more activity on the property, the more questions there are.
I understand completely. I'm happy to provide that. I think that's helpful. Would you like to provide about the thirtieth of each month?
That would be lovely.
How does that mesh with your meeting schedule? Because I think ideally you would want to be able to at least get these so that in case there needs to be any discussion at a meeting.
Well, this is the second, this is the second meeting of the month, so perhaps you talk to Gretchen and you provide it for review by the planning board before the second schedule.
Do you want to do a two-week deadline for the second meeting of each month?
I don't, I don't know that he needs the deadline. I think this is for information purposes only, but if he gets it to us before the second meeting of the month on a monthly basis, then there's some regularity that's built into that and it ties to planning board meetings. So if planning board members have questions that arise, they can bring it up in the early part of the meeting.
Supposing in two weeks because it's already scheduled?
Well, you work that out with
I mean, that's
You know, you work it out, but I'd like to have it before us, before the second meeting. I'm only going off the second meeting because this is the second meeting and it opens on. Looking at thirty days out, you know, to the end of January and you and Nick can correspond and figure out when you want to get it. So I think it's useful for you as well in terms of circulation.
Yeah, just so I, it would be good just to, even if it's just an email, for us to have the schedule that we can all have everybody on the same page.
Agreed. I think it takes sort of that process works out well. I'll work with Gretchen on that. If it's that soon, then there may not be one in January only because I've given you the update.
Well, I'm hopeful a lot will happen between now and the end of January.
If you can get a state agency to
Well, for example,
Thank you.
For example, if there's no public comment by January twelfth, tenth, as you said, you can tell me that.
Fair enough.
Very good.
Thank you.
Clear on the conditions?
Well, I need to have a resolution first.
I'll find out.
Okay, I can't do it.
So what I've put together on the fly as we've been talking for consideration by the Town Rhinebeck Planning Board for a timeline extension for Grasmere House is that the Town Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon receiving a request for reapproval by Grasmere House and upon review by Graham Lyons and the Town Planning Board attorneys and subsequent materials submitted by the applicant represented, agree the case law permits an extension of the project per CSI versus Town Rhinebeck, integrated approval timelines and hereby grant the extension of the project extension as follows. Extending the end date for satisfaction, the site plan board will condition from December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and ask a special use permit from June twentieth, twenty twenty-four to August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, consistent with the verestow project approval date, which is for the wetlands permit. Then conditioning that upon monthly written updates on project status and a request that any future extension needs, we submit in the planning board for consideration, but later than two months prior to the August twelfth expiration date noted above, which would give us adequate time to do any types of public hearing notifications, scheduling or other things before an expiration date. So then two months could be tricky. And I'm hoping we're not going to get Those conditions are acceptable to the applicant. Thank you.
I'm moved to accept the resolution as drafted before our very eyes.
Thank you. Always in favor of
Aye.
Post extensions. Well, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, again, I want to personally express not only my appreciation to Michael, but to all of you sitting here for the hard work you put in this year. It's a pleasure to work with all of you and you, I know you put a lot of time into it and I know it takes a lot more than your personal lives. I would also encourage Michael to take his nameplate with him and I think it warrants a permanent attachment to a table at Pete's where you can hold court forward.
George, just don't do that.
As the, well, at least carry it with you at all times and wherever you plop at Pete's, please put that in front of you so everybody knows. And in many ways, you are still a member of this planning board and always will be. So again, thank you all and may I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Michael. Always in favor. Second, post-extension. Thank you and thanks again, Michael.